The agenda item is, the purpose of this hearing is to consider the proposed 2018 budget prepared by the City of Forest Park of Hamilton County for the fiscal year end in December 31, 2018. Is there somebody here to address this issue? Ways and Means and Finance Department people?
I defer to our experts.
Where they at?
Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding.
As discussed at the Ways and Means meeting, this is the recommended budget for 2018. The details of the budget really have not changed. As expressed, it is, and I'm going to try to explain this as best I can, it is structurally balanced operationally excluding our transfers. But because we have to subsidize a lot of our capital and debt funds, we have a $1.4 million transfer that we need to make to make all of our capital improvements work in the upcoming budget. And because of that, the budget is out of balance by close to, by a little bit over three quarters of a million dollars. So we are using cash reserves that we already accumulated from previous years to use it on a one-time investment back into the city. So there's a lot of information in this document. We did resurrect our old structure of budgeting. So you have, the full 421-page document is out on the web, and we did send you a link to it rather than crash your iPads by sending you a 400-page document. But the budget as it had been presented in the past is out there in full detail, and it has been available since Friday at about 6:30 in the evening.
I just have a quick question. You're talking about next year?
Yes.
And its planned spend down for these projects?
Correct.
In the out-years, do we see that again in the out-years?
No. It is our, okay, so next year we're spending about, what was the capital budget? Do you remember?
For '18.
For '18. How much are we spending in capital? It was like two point...
Two and a half.
Two and a half? It's a little bit over $2 million, which, that is not normal for us. Normally, it is about $800,000 to $1 million. So this is our second push of a round of projects. If you remember, with the tax modification plan, we had promised to do certain things, at least a half million, $400,000 to a half million worth of road improvements. We have some major building improvements that we need to do. We're doing plaza replacements, we're moving the server room. Those are one-time shots that probably won't happen again. At least, I hope I don't have to move the server room every year. So what we do is we accumulate cash and kind of set it aside and build it up. And then when we have a group of projects that we can finance together, pay for together, we put them into the budget with a planned spend-down. So you've set aside the money, now it's time to do the projects. Will we accomplish them all in a year? It's going to be tough, but they're all planned to go because we've all set aside the money. Now, more than likely, it'll take us a year to a year and a half to complete all those projects.
Question.
Yes?
So our cash reserves will go from what to what by the time all those projects are finished? And at what point will we be replenishing our cash reserves after taxation season?
Our total cash reserves will go down from 13, $13,151,405 is what we're estimating to be at the end of '17. And we're going to spend down about $3 million of that. So it'll be $10,715,641. And that's across all the funds.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody else? Just for clarity's sake, and I know we've had this discussion every time we've had a budget. Would you, and/or Andy or one of you, both of you? Sometimes the impression is that when you talk about a cash reserve, whatever that amount is, that that's just extra money floating around out there that we have that we could spend on whatever we wanted.
Not true. The cash reserves are broke down across 16 different funds that the city operates. The largest cash reserve is in the general fund. It is about $4.5 million. But you're talking about $4.5 million in a fund that spends over $13 million and has to support the rest of the funds. So the way the general fund works, it not only has to have reserves for its own appropriations, it has to have reserves in case any other fund goes deficit spending. Because the general fund can transfer to any fund, but no fund can transfer back to the general fund. So we do carry a higher level of cash reserve in the general fund to make sure that when any other fund has any issues, we can cover it, which is why we could cover the cobblewood TIF. If the general fund wasn't in a healthy state, it would not have been able to pay for the $115,000 worth of debt it now has to absorb because those funds have run out.
And we did that for Carolyn back in the day.
Back in the day. And we did advances, and Carolyn paid all those advances back. But in the budget book, in the budget summary section, is a highbrow overview of kind of the scope of what the budget is. It'll give you a detailed breakdown of the fund balance within each fund. There are particular funds that are for a particular purpose, and you cannot just spend it at will. The TIFs have to be spent in the TIF districts, which is why they're separated and accounted for in a separate fund. So there are several funds that have special purposes, and you can only use them for those special purposes. The next highest fund is the fire levy fund, and for that particular reason, you can only use it on the operations of the fire department.
Yeah, I've heard of that. All right. Okay. Thank you. Andy, did you have anything to add?
I think she covered it all.
Well, I especially wanted you to address that issue because, as I said, when we do the budget and people see that there is a cash reserve, you know, the immediate thinking, unfortunately, is, well, why don't we take this cash reserve and buy another three or four police vehicles? Or why don't we buy vehicles to pick up leaves? You know, the assumption being, we have all of this extra money floating around out there. And I think it's important that people understand how, you know, what the process is and how it works. So that just because you may see an over or a balance here or there, doesn't mean that we've got this extra money to play with.
Correct.
Anything else from anybody else on this? I want to personally thank you all in your department. I know how much work you had to do in a very short time to get this ready for us so that we could meet our, meet the timelines in which we have, that we're required to meet in order to get this budget ready. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on this public hearing? Anything from the public? Anything from any other council members on this issue? Hearing none. I would declare that the public hearing is ended, and we are adjourned, and we have about three and a half to four minutes before we go into our regularly scheduled meeting. Call to order, City Council Meeting Number 1303, November 20, 2017. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Cottle?
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to excuse Councilwoman Cottle.
Second.
And move in second that we excuse Councilwoman Collins. Is there any, Councilwoman Cottle, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
opposed. Councilwoman Cottle is excused. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. Everybody should have received a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. The minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is presentation. First of these will be Business of the Month Award, Kent Smith, State Farm Insurance, Mr. Paul Brown.
Thank you, Mayor members of council. You might recall that this was actually our October Business of the Month. Earlier this month, we recognized Walmart as our November Business of the Month for their donations and contributions and assistance with the fire department on the hurricane relief effort. But when we did our October Business of the Month, Kent Smith, who is the principal at State Farm Insurance over in Kemper Meadow, wasn't able to join us. Kent really wanted to be a part of this, so we invited him back for the actual presentation tonight. I think all of you know about State Farm and everything that they offer, but what's interesting with Kent and why we recognized his small business with this award, he was actually one of the first tenants to come into the, what used to be North by Northwest Office Complex and do a renovation and take over some office space in that complex, and was one of the first significant tenant renovations over there. So we wanted to call attention to that effort, to the investment he made in the community. Some of you probably know him. He's been a longtime resident of the Green Hills and Forest Park area. He's an elder at his church. He's an assistant scout master. He's also a local high school wrestling official and part of the St. Xavier High School Athletic Booster. So I have to say, as a former bomber, I'm a little bit disappointed with the football results from last week, but we'll get over it. But, but good for Witten Woods. So, but, you know, we wanted to call attention to this investment in our community. You know, small business people are at the heart and soul of what we do here in Forest Park. I mean, we have over 600 businesses here. Most of them are small business people. So with that, I'd like to invite Kent up to accept the award tonight and wish him the very best at his new location.
Thank you very much.
City of Forest Park, Business of the Month, Kent Smith, State Farm Insurance, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park. Again, Kent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have a word for us, please.
I think it's great to be able to bring the business back in this community. I grew up here. My father was on the city council many years ago. It's neat to see how things change, but it's also great to be, you know, to bring a business in here and be part of that community while living here. I invite all of you to come to my office. It's just right around the corner. And, you know, I think it's a great place to be, so thank you very much.
How's that Eagle Scout doing?
Yeah, he's doing great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the next item. Communications from the public. And before we do that, as usual, if there's anyone who feels the need to leave, they may do so at this time. Next item on the agenda, item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are tape-recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who wants to address the council? Don't let everybody rush up at once. Next item on the agenda is item number five, report of standing committees. First standing committee is the Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report from the Law Committee at this time, but I'm available to answer questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, Councilwoman Collins. I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 27th. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next item is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I don't have a report on the Human Resource Committee, but I would like to let everybody know that the Christmas decoration jaden is on next Friday, 12/8. So get those lights up now. Start putting them up for Christmas. And I would also like to offer my condolences to Ty Smith on the loss of his father-in-law. With that, would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none. Councilwoman Holt, there are no items on the agenda for you for the next meeting. Would you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Item numbers, item C, Public Improvements and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Yes. Just to follow up regarding street repairs, we're still painting streets throughout the city as the weather permits, and so crews have had 3.25 tons of hot mix, and we're repairing 117 holes and patching up some curb areas. That completes my report.
Questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none. Councilwoman Moore, I have one item on the agenda, it's the Fire Department driveway apron improvements. Do you have any to add?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Next report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Cottle is absent. Does anybody on that committee have a report for her? Hearing none. There are no items listed on the agenda for the work session on the 27th for public safety. Would go to Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no report, but I would echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Holt, and my condolences go out to the Smith family also.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none. Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening, and I would also like to express my condolences to the Smith family in their time of bereavement.
Any questions for Councilman Burns? Hearing none. Mr. Burns, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Yes. In the work session, we need to discuss the next joint school board and council session schedule.
Okay. School board. The next meeting, okay. Okay, that would be a below-the-line item. I'll add that one to the agenda. Any other questions, Mr. Burns? Thank you. Next standing committee is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications. I have no report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Next item on the agenda is item number six, the mayor's report. I would like to add my condolences to, on behalf of the city, to Ty Smith and his family. They would ask everyone to keep them in their prayers. Also, that would end my report, but I will take any questions if there are any. Thank you. Next agenda, item is item seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. First, on behalf of the staff, I too express condolences to Ty Smith and his family and the loss of their family member. I do want to report that we are anticipating preparing and issuing the final progress newsletter probably mid-December. So if there's anything in particular anybody wants to add to the progress, just kind of keep in mind that we'll have it completed by mid-December and available for the public. I've also notified council members and have gotten responses from most council members that we need to arrange for the official photo for city council. And at this point, just so you're aware, it appears that the majority of individuals are okay with both December 11th and December 18th, with probably a preference being December the 11th. So that's what we are anticipating right now. I say that because it's essential that all council members be in attendance for the official photo. So just be aware that we'll be sending a memo out, and it should confirm December 11th as the, as the date for that. And it should work out with the other meetings that you would normally have scheduled at that point in time. And so finally, I would report that all the departmental reports have been completed. They've been included in the council packet, and they've also been made available for the public inspection. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Yes, I have a question. When is our official tree lighting ceremony?
Fourth.
The fourth?
At 7:00. December 4th at 7:00 at the firehouse.
Thank you.
And that's, of course, one of the reasons why we were avoiding December 4th. That was an available date, but not a convenient date for, for council.
Anything for, any questions for the city manager? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, other reports. The first of the other reports is the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report, last Thursday, I met with the property maintenance staff to discuss proper service of their summons and complaint. I thought it was a very effective meeting. Also, I reviewed and approved and answered questions regarding the parked vehicle ordinance 30, 2017, as well as the tree removal ordinance, Resolution 38, 2017. I've responded to some more records requests coming out of the police department since the last meeting. I also filed a petition and got an order from the common police court here in Hamilton County to dispose of unclaimed property in the police inventory, specifically firearms that are to be destroyed. And that would be the end of my report. Oh, I did want to tell you one more thing. You know, we just recently amended our solicitation ordinance, and I shared that with the ACLU of Ohio, and the staff attorney, Elizabeth Bonham, sent back an email, "Thank you for your responsiveness to this matter. We consider this to be closed in our office." So we were successful in concluding and resolving any potential issues there. That is the end of my report, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Law Director? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Wyckoff. Next report under others, Clerk of Council, Mrs. Duxton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also offer condolences to the Smith family during this difficult time, and I'd like to report that ordinance number 24-2017 and 25-2017 and resolution numbers 31-2017 through 34-2017 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none. Thank you, Sally. I want to go back and give you some information regarding meetings and meeting times, and ask you to please place these on your calendar, and ask you to be sure to be present and on time because this is going to be a very time-intensive day. We're looking at Monday, December 4th. On Monday, December 4th, at 6:15 PM, we will have the organizational meeting here in chambers. We will leave here and go over to, as usual, to the fire department base where the tree lighting ceremony for the kids will be held at that time, and that will be at 7:00. Following that, we will return here to chambers to do our regular, regularly scheduled council meeting. Again, I stress the importance of being present and on time because everything here is going to be very tight in terms of the timeframe. Okay, we will go back, go on with the agenda. We will go to item number nine, unfinished businesses. There are motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only ordinances number 26-2017 and 27-2017.
And move in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only ordinances number 26-2017 and 27-2017. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Just two things. These ordinances were read for the first time on November 6th, and also, anytime we do this, we need to be ensured that they are posted for the appropriate amount of time so that this would ensure that that has been done.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. With the clerk, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, pass 6-0. First item on the agenda, item A, unfinished businesses, ordinance number 26-2017. The clerk, please read that ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 26-2017, and ordinance amending ordinance number 20-2016 and appointing John R. Wyckoff, Attorney-at-Law, as Solicitor, Law Director, and Prosecutor, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Holt?
I move for adoption of ordinance number 26-2017.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and that we adopt ordinance 26-2017. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Holt?
This is a scheduled second reading and form of vote for the appointment of our Law Director and Prosecutor. If approved, this ordinance would effectively reappoint John Wyckoff as the city's Law Director, Prosecutor, with a 2% adjustment to the current annual compensation. This particular ordinance also corrects a typographical error in ordinance number 20-2016 whereby there was a conflict in the annual stated rate for his appointment and the two components, basic legal services and matters of litigation whereby there is a trial and he has to make court appearance. Basically, the 2017 annual stated amount of compensation was correct, however, the breakout of the costs related to matters of litigation erroneously restated the 2016 amount without the intended 2% adjustment, which made the two components not add up to the total stated amount, the annual total compensation of 2016 rate plus 2%. And with that, I urge adoptions or passage of ordinance number 20-26-2017.
Any further discussion from anyone else? Hearing none. With the clerk, please call the roll on 26-2017.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2017, pass a 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item B, ordinance number 27-2017. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 27-2017, and ordinance appointing Darren E. Nye, Attorney-at-Law, as public defender and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Holt?
I urge adoptions of ordinance number 27-2017.
Second.
And move in second that we adopt ordinance 27-2017. Is there any discussion?
Yes, similar to the discussion above regarding the Law Director and Prosecutor appointment, this represents the reappointment of Darren E. Nye as the public defender. The current contract arrangement through 2017 provides for compensation at the rate of $50 per hour for services rendered to or for each assigned indigent, in...
Indigent.
...indigent client at the conclusion of each such client's case. Although he is contracted to serve in this capacity, his contractual relationship is slightly different than, for example, our Law Director and magistrate. With this, I urge adoptions of ordinance number 27-2017.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. With the clerk, please call the roll on ordinance 27-2017.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Yes.
Orders twenty-seven dash twenty-seventeen, passes six zero. Um, before going to item ten, I just wanted to, uh, say for the viewing public, we're required by law to provide, uh, you know, there's, there's a provision in the law that says, uh, you know, you hear it on TV all the time, if you can't afford an attorney, one will be appointed for you. This is the purpose of having the, the public defender that, who in this instance is an independent contractor and we contract with him for his services at fifty dollars per hour. Uh, also, and that's not unheard, we're also required to provide interpreters for those people who, um, have a problem, uh, understanding our court system, uh, the, uh, that is primarily basically English. So these are costs that, uh, one would not necessarily think about, but, uh, just like there are things in the budget and other places that we're required by law to follow, we're required by law to follow these, these processes also to make sure that everybody's given a fair and equitable hearing in our court. We will now move to item number ten, new business. Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinance numbers twenty-eight through thirty, twenty-seventeen. These ordinances were posted six days prior to this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinances numbers twenty-eight through thirty, twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on a motion to suspend?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules, passes six zero. First item on the new business, item A, ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen, making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Forest Park, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes, there's a lengthy discussion here. I'll try to keep it short.
Please.
Um, we have had a public hearing on this and this was presented at our last work session. We are, um, moving on the, um, budget for next year and as a kind of snapshot, um, we have many different funds and I want to kind of cover some of the highlights of this. The general fund is proposed in the budget constitutes thirteen million, thirteen-plus million dollars in expenses with, with over, um, twelve million in expected revenues. And the difference in this is that, um, we are planning on, um, spending down some of our cash reserves because we have been putting money aside for some capital projects. And so, um, next year, we will see that cash balance going down to deal with those, um, specialized projects. We are keeping the current staffing, but we are adding a patrol officer that replaces a departure in twenty-seventeen, the replacement of a police chief beginning six one, twenty, uh, eighteen. We'll probably do the domino kind of thing where we'll, you know, uh, move people up, but there will eventually need to be someone down the line that will be replaced. Uh, we will have a new patrol officer added back in after being cut in two thousand nine, a police clerk, and I'm so glad to hear that, added back in after being cut in two thousand nine, two finance, uh, college interns for six months, a new communications manager and a fire lieutenant replacement due to the promotion of a lieutenant to the fire training captain. We have some, um, fire capital budgeted for the replacement of fire engine forty-three, a lift squad, a staff vehicle and driveway replacement, some, uh, cone station remodeling and replacement of some air tanks. Uh, we budgeted demolition for, uh, five houses at an estimate of about forty thousand out of our capital improvements fund. And we also contained several new capital put, projects and I'm glad to say that we are putting money into the repaving of our roads and we have scheduled Mandarin, Riga, Sebring and Morocco. And, um, I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll on ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen, passes six zero. Next item is item B, ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-seventeen and ordinance establishing a miscellaneous fee schedule for the city of Forest Park.
This is the first reading and, this is not being voted on tonight, right?
Correct.
This will be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Next item on the agenda is item C, ordinance number thirty dash twenty-seventeen. The clerk, please read that ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number thirty dash twenty-seventeen and ordinance supplementing chapter seventy-three, parking and stopping of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park regarding parking of inoperable junk motor vehicles on public roadways.
Again, this is a first reading and this ordinance will be on the agenda for the next, um, council meeting. Next item on the agenda would be a motion. Councilwoman Holt?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolutions numbers thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two dash two, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we, uh, passed a motion to, uh, require the reading in full and read by title only, resolutions thirty-five, six, seven, nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two by title only. Is there any discussion?
Is that these resolutions were posted six days prior to this meeting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on a motion to suspend?
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, passes six zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is item D, resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen. The clerk, please read that resolution by title only.
Resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract between the city of Forest Park and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, police dispatchers, clerks.
Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move for the adoption of resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you. Uh, staff began bargaining with the Fraternal Order of Police or FOP, representing our clerk and dispatchers, uh, in October of this year. The current contract for this FOP unit expires in December, December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen. Um, staff has successfully negotiated a mutually agreed upon contract for the next three years. The proposed agreement, um, the proposed agreement for both sides is now subject to council's approval. The general wage increase of two percent for each year, um, for, of the contract is consistent with the budget and general wage increase already incorporated in other labor agreements. Um, it does, uh, allow for a little bit of flexibility with regard to uniform selection and elimination of, um, wearing ties or, and tie bars as part of their uniform and also makes adjustments, um, to establish December first as the date that comp time balances would be paid out to those qualified employees. And with that, I would urge the adoption of resolution thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll on resolution thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen, passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item E, resolution number thirty-six dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution, resolution number thirty-six dash twenty-seventeen, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Uh, yes, I would move adoption of resolution number thirty-six dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-six dash twenty-seventeen. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes, this is the proposed salary resolution that covers employees for the city of Forest Park that have been scheduled and budgeted for, uh, and across the board adjustment to the salary schedule. If this resolution is approved as recommended, it will be reflected in next year's budget. It may be noted that due to the scheduled retirement and the transition process in place for the city manager, any merit performance adjustment resulting from the final personnel evaluations would be effective on the final anniversary date, which was October seventeenth, until the end of the year, which would remain well within the pay range for the position. The general rate adjustment is approximately two percent, which is competitive for this reason and within our budgeting ability and I would urge adoption of this, uh, resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution thirty-six dash twenty-seventeen?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six dash twenty-seventeen, passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item F, resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for a community develop, community development block grant funds for program years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you. Staff is recommending that we submit our community development block grant application, which consists of five projects spread out over, over three years. We've conducted two public hearings on October sixteenth and, and November sixth respectively to make the community aware of the programs and to allow for any public input regarding the community needs. Based on the public hearings and requests, um, staff has received, uh, from residents seeking some type of assistance or service and the information that have been informally gathered during the daily assessments of the community. So there have been five prioritized, um, projects spread out between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty, um, averaging amount roughly, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the amount that has been expected or would be anticipated if these grants are awarded would be roughly, um, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Therefore, the, um, priority order that is listed with the county would provide approval for only four or five of these projects, um, but not all of the recommended. So with that, I would urge adoption of, um, resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You said four, four or five, four or five. You said they would do four or five.
Or, or, it may not be all.
Okay, you said four or five. Now they would do two, not four or five. They would do number four or number five, not four or five of them. Are you missing what I'm saying?
No, I got you. You're right.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, any further discussions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-seventeen, passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, item G, resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full, it was not posted?
Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager and the Forest Park Environmental Awareness Manager to develop and implement a residential tree removal program. Whereas the city of Forest Park intends to develop a residential tree remove, removal program and whereas the residential tree removal program will consist of a partnership with the Forest Park Environmental Awareness Program participating, for, participating Forest Park residents and Arbor RX Tree Specialist Company. And whereas the Arbo RX Tree Specialist Company is an experienced provider of tree removal services and whereas the city of Forest Park tree removal goals are to improve the appearance and safety of single and two-family households within Forest Park and whereas the Forest Park Environmental Awareness Program will contribute a subsidy to each participating household towards the total cost of their tree removal services until a total of fifteen thousand dollars has been expended, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the city of Forest Park accepts this partnership and their contributions put forth towards the tree removal, the tree residential tree removal program. Section two, the Arbo X, the Arbo RX Tree Specialist Company will accept from residents the total cost of their tree removal services payments minus the amounts of the Forest Park Environmental Program subsidies. Section three, the Arbo RX Tree Specialist Company will accept from the Forest Park Environmental Awareness Program the subsidy per household for all tree removal services not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Section four, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with the Arbo RX Tree Specialist Company as described in exhibit A. Section five, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect after its passage.
Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move for the adoption of resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-eight dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to acknowledge the, um, environmental awareness team and management group for coming up with this particular program. Um, as most people know, the ashbore has devastated many trees throughout our region and this is an opportunity to, um, create a program where people can actually remove those trees from their homes and, and other, um, types of trees that they may have. Um, this is a new program, um, by the Fire Forest Park, uh, Environmental Awareness Program, uh, to develop the tree removal pilot for single and two-family households. The basic program would provide a fifteen thousand dollar pool, uh, in the form of residential subsidies, subsidies that in turn would provide fifty percent of the cost of the tree removal up to a maximum subsidy of five hundred dollars per household. If approved, um, the program would be promoted during the months of December and January, obviously to, um, prepare for the spring where the majority of that work would be done. Um, so with that, I would urge the adoption of resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-seventeen.
Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Collins?
Yes, I move that we, um, table this issue for now and, uh, send it possibly, uh, back for discussion in work session or, uh, give the, uh, environmental awareness department the opportunity to, um, structure a, a, a more beneficial to our taxpayer, um, deal because we have the opportunity to, to, uh, structure this new tree removal pilot program so that we may truly deliver a fifty percent discount on tree removal services, uh, to our taxpaying residents. And I believe that in designating Arbor RX- uh, to our taxpaying residents. And I believe that in designating Arbor RX as the, um...
Before you can go on with your discussion, we have to vote, uh...
Mr. Mayor.
You have to get a second.
John, is that correct? We have to get a second before...
Yeah, we are, and it's a motion to postpone.
Is there a second to the motion to postpone? There is no second. I will second it so that we can have this discussion. Uh, at this point, um, what I, um, John, and you'll have to tell me how I, how to do this legally. What I want to do is to have, uh, make sure that Councilwoman Collins gets all of her questions answered. And in doing that, I'm going to ask the, uh, uh, right when the director of the environmental program, uh, manager of the environmental program, board of directors, and hall leader, uh, conjunction of the two, to explain what the Environmental Awareness Board of Directors is attempting to do and how you're gonna do it and the process. Because in doing so, you may answer some of the questions that she has. And with hall leader, you might answer whether or not, uh, it's feasible to, to, uh, do some of those things. So, uh, John, do I do that in discussion or do I need a motion to suspend the rules to do that?
Um, well, you're gonna have a discussion now on the motion that has been seconded, if it's approved. You still have to vote on this postponement.
Right.
First step. Second step is, um, Councilwoman Collins can have her discussion, um, and I heard her say she wanted to do in work session, so I don't know if you wanna do it in work session or do it here.
Well, what I'm, what I'm attempting to do here is if we moved, i- i- if we hold the vote on the motion to sp- uh, postpone, and if that motion fails, then we go on to the vote.
Yes.
Then that will not allow us to do anything else beyond that except vote it up or down, right?
Uh, on approval, yes.
Right. Uh, what I would like to do before taking that vote, I would like to have uh, Wright, to explain what the program is and what it's trying to do. And after the, you know, with the hope that after that explanation, she will have had all of her questions answered, uh, before we, you know, we get to a vote to, uh, postpone. And it may not be necessary at that point.
You can, you can do that.
Okay.
The mayor and you're in charge of the meeting.
Um, Wright, would you come to, excuse me, Wright?
I just wanna make sure, first, we have the, uh, motion to postpone addressed, don't we?
Not, not yet. Um, the mayor's chosen to have a discussion before that motion to postpone is voted upon.
Yeah, and like I said, well, I wanna do that because if, if we go ahead with the motion to postpone, at that point, it's too late to go back and, and have any discussion. So, if you would, please.
Hello, I'm Wright Quinn. I'm the environmental manager for the city. And the program in question is our pilot program for tree removal services for the residents of Forest Park. Uh, for the last four years, four or five years, uh, we have been trying to replenish our urban forest and we have a program called reforesting Forest Park. And the reason why that was developed was because of the ashbore that was coming through town. In fact, it's just kinda wiped out all the, uh, ash trees in this area. And it's devastating a lot of the properties that are within Forest Park. And so we thought that if we developed a program for planting trees, this would get us going on maybe developing a more comprehensive program down the road. And the component that, uh, we realized that we had not, uh, focused on was removing of the trees. The replanting of the trees is an easy part. We, we subsidize the trees, the residents put them in the yard, they water them, and it grows. The removal of the trees, we talked about this five years ago. We weren't really sure how to go about it. The, really, the, the effects of the emerald ashbore hasn't quite hit us in full force yet, and so we kinda waited a little bit. But now we're getting calls, increased number of calls from residents downstairs during the workday asking, are there programs that are available that they can take advantage of to remove some of these trees? So that's why we have started the, the process in trying to develop a program for the residents. Now, this is a pilot program.
By we, you mean the environmental awareness?
The environmental, right, sorry, the environmental program. Now, I, I can't say enough that this is a pilot program. We tried to find other programs through communities that might have this type of service, and we couldn't. So we are one of the first to do something for our residents. Okay, so the way that we originally put it together was to, um, uh, select an arborist, a certified arborist that was fully insured, had all the credentials, and ha- used their knowledge and expertise in helping us put this program together. And the way that we structured the program was that uh, we would promote the program in December and January to let people know that these services are available. In January, residents would begin to register. If they were interested, if they had trees that they wanted to have removed from their property, they would register in the month of January. At the end of January, we would give that list to the, uh, arborist. With the understanding that the arborist would then go, schedule a, a meeting with those that registered and do a site visit. The arborist would identify the trees that the residents wanted to remove, would mark those trees, would take a picture of the trees, and then they, he would enter into a discussion on whether or not they, uh, what the cost would be to remove them by that arborist. And then they would work out. So that was the original beginning of the program. We were gonna use one arborist. He was gonna go in there, uh, do a site visit, uh, provide a cost estimate, and the resident could say yea or nay.
Okay, let me stop you there for a minute. And this was the process that was discussed and approved by the Environmental Awareness Board?
Unfortunately, we, we were gonna do that. Our next meeting is Christmas. So, I, we wanted to get this done because we felt like the winter would be probably the better time to remove the trees because in the spring, summer, and fall, tree companies are really busy. And so, uh, I talked with some people on the staff and they thought that maybe it'd be best if we moved up the timetable. So, no, unfortunately, and this is the first program that I haven't really had the chance to talk to the board, and I've been going back and forth on that. But the timetable was such that we felt like we needed to, to move on and I was gonna update the board.
Okay, next big thing. When you say the arborists will go, after the people register, the arborists will go to their property, look at the trees, mark them, and take pictures. Now, there, in, going through this, there was a, a maximum, is it five dollars, five hundred dollars per tree or five hundred dollars per registered person?
Five hundred dollars per household.
Per household. So, a household could have three or four trees.
Correct.
But that household is gonna be limited to five hundred dollars. Another household may have one tree, and that one would be limited to five hundred dollars.
Right, and they don't, and if they don't use the full hundred dollars per household? It, well, it goes back into the pot that year, but they, but I will have records, and if another one dies, then they still have some of their five hundred dollars. Not, not a whole five hundred dollars, but a portion of it that they haven't used. Right.
Could I just clarify something? No one is guaranteed five hundred dollars. They're guaranteed fifty percent of the cost.
Up to.
If the cost is a hundred and twenty, they'll get sixty dollars.
Right.
It's, I mean, if there, if you've got multiple trees taken down and it's a thousand dollars, you will get the full five hundred, but it's fifty percent.
Right.
And I want that to be certain. Nobody's guaranteed five hundred dollars.
Okay, so, so the, let's go back to the arborist is at the door, he's done the cost estimate and has presented it to the resident. The resident initially, in our, in our, our original program, could say, yes, that's fine, we'll go ahead and do it, and they'll, they'll sign the contract and everything. Or they could say, no, I really don't think so, I'm, I'm not prepared to do that now, and then that would be fine. The, the, the arborist would then go to the next one on the list until we had enough people that would consume the, the fifteen thousand dollars. And then, uh, there were some, uh, interest in maybe expanding the selection of tree companies for our residents. And so, we went back to the drawing board and thought, okay, where would this be? If we wanted to, uh, bring in some, uh, additional or alternative companies that people could select from if they wanted to. And so, we figured it would be at that moment at the door, if, uh, the resident thinks that the price is too high, that they say, no, I, I think that I would like to contact some other arborists. That is fine. They're more than willing to do that. Uh, what the arborist at the door would do would give them a sheet of guidelines that we recommend that they follow. And those guidelines would be to make sure, because you don't know who's gonna be knocking at the door, make sure that they're certified arborist, make sure that they have insurance, in case they don't, if they chop down a tree and it falls in somebody's yard, they have to be covered. And there's some other guidelines that we will have for them to consider when they, if they go out shopping for another. But the trees that will be marked are the trees that will be taken down. That, and, and, and so, I will get a folder of people who want our arborists to work with them directly. I will get a folder of those that wanna select their own people. Now, the people who decide that they want to find their own arborist, which is fine, they will be given a timeframe to find another tree company, because we can't just hold this money until October. We, we wanna get this thing done and moved on. So we'll give them, let's arbitrarily, let's give them thirty days from the point that I get the report from the arborist, from my arborist, and I will send those people a letter saying, I understand that you wanna look for your own person, that's fine. You've got this amount of time to do it. Find an arborist, these are the guidelines that we recommend that you follow. And let me know when you have things lined up, not, not when you have them cut down. Contact me when everything's ready to go, so I can make sure that we're all in sync. And then I will then contact them and say, yes, go ahead and do it. And so, then, then their arborist can go ahead and remove the trees. They will let me know by submitting a, a copy of the contract and the invoice. And then I'll do a site visit to make sure that those trees were the ones that were cut down. And if everything's fine, then I would go back and we will reimburse, not the vendor, not the tree company, because that's, we will, our arborist, we will, uh, directly reimburse him. But we'll reimburse the, the resident because they're having a contract, a specific contract between the resident and the tree company. And so they're gonna have to pay in full. And then they submit the invoice and then we pa- reimburse them for the subsidy.
Okay, so, whatever tree company I get, uh, contract, that contract is between me and that tree company.
Exactly.
And Forest Park is going to pay me the subsidy, and it's up to me to deal with that tree company.
Right.
Now, hall leader, I, I know that part of this, part of the reason for this is because you are, there are certain things that by law you can pay, certain people that you can pay and certain people you can't pay. And because of that, come on up for me. Because of that, you might wanna explain that, 'cause I think that's a big part of this too. That people need to understand the, the reason we're not paying each individual company that somebody gets.
I would have to do a lot of research in order to figure out whether or not they're legitimate companies, whether I'm paying a foreign national, whether I'm paying a terrorist, whether they have findings for recovery. We have to go through all of that for every vendor. So when you open up something like that, it's always a scare for the finance department. I don't know what I'm getting. So I have to do a lot of research in order to pay them because we are more liable for passing taxpayer dollars to people that we don't know. So, who I do know in the arrangement is the resident. I know they're in Forest Park, I know where they live, I know they vote on everything that I have, so it's easier for me to pay them than it is for me to figure out who they're dealing with and what the reputable nature of that company is and whether or not I can pass that company taxpayer dollars. So it was my push to say to Wright, to make this thing cleaner, easier, and better for me to get it completed in a timely manner, it's easier to pay the resident than it is for me to do the research for all the arborists that are out there. Um, and we, we kind of did that to get the initial list and only landed with ArborX that was eligible. So, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna keep sending them out to try to find these certified arborists that have the proper insurance and all the other issues.
Okay, and, and, and John, from, from, in terms of the insurance, we're trying to work this so that the city is not going to be held liable for any damage done by somebody who we don't have a contract with.
I've already given that opinion. Um, the city, uh, if we're, if it's ArborX, the contract with ArborX clearly indicates they're an independent contractor, they're required to have their own liability insurance, they're required to indemnify the city should the city get sued. If it is a, an arborist chosen by the homeowner, that homeowner has entered into a contract with that arborist, the city's not even involved in that contract, number one. Number two, we're not controlling the work, and number three, we aren't controlling the property where the work is being done. So there's no liability on either side.
Okay, and, and the further part of that is, if either resident have a contract with company Z, and company Z fails to do the work to my satisfaction, then I can't expect the city to intervene on my behalf because the city is not a sa- even a third party to a second part, a, a third party to the contract.
Purportive contract and the city is not part of that contract.
Okay. At this point, uh, Councilwoman Collins, do you have any other specific questions that, uh, for information that they did not cover?
Yes, um, two points. One, ArborX, their price for tree removal tends to be, uh, substantially higher than other companies' price for tree for the exact same service. Uh, it's, it tends to be higher. Uh, I've so far seen nothing in this contract which says that ArborX is willing to offer our citizens in return for us giving them bulk business uh, as this, uh, program would entitle them to, uh, that they are in any way granting us or our citizens a discount on their already substantially higher services for tree removal. And I was wondering if you sti- if you have the opportunity to go in and ask for something like that. Or maybe another suggestion would be, um, if you, uh, left it to the bidding process uh, to see who might come to the table as, oh, we are all, you know, we're eligible to, uh, to be the, uh, to be a pre- a preferred vendor in this matter. Instead of just one, we give our citizens a list of, of, of individuals who charge different prices.
Okay, so all of that puts us in li- higher liability status. And I intentionally asked Wright not to go in that direction. Let me explain why. ArborX is providing us with a service with their expertise, Wright and I don't know what trees are healthy and which trees aren't. So we're relying on their certified arborist to tell us what's healthy and what's not. So that is why they're going to look at the tree and tell us whether, and, and mark it to say that is what we're going to take down. That's what's unhealthy. So we're relying on an expert that's carrying insurance coverage and protecting the city to, to make... to, to make sure that we're not taking down something that's perfectly healthy. So that's the role that they play. Now, if the resident decides to enter into an agreement with that contractor to take down that tree, that ends our, the relationship between, um, us. It, it's just like if they can hire anybody they want to. If they choose to hire ArborX because the city uses them as a vendor, they have that option. And ArborX has that ability to talk to them. If they choose not to sign with ArborX, ArborX will provide them with the list of what they need to do to get their own vendor. But it is a contract between the homeowner and the vendor, whether it's ArborX or not.
Wright, did you have something to add?
It was just, um, uh, to your question about asking if we could get some kind of a discounted price. I did ask him that, because I was hoping that since, it's, it's not a really big contract, but it is a substantial, you know, fifteen thousand dollars is fifteen thousand dollars. And he looked at me and says, you know, I am a busy guy. And, um, I have to charge a certain amount per crew, per hour in order to make this work. And so, that's, that's what I'm gonna have to do. And the interesting thing, and I've been, and, and I'm with you, I'm kinda, it's, it's difficult to try to estimate what a tree's gonna cost. And he started throwing out all kinds of variables. So it's hard to say, you know, put out and says, you're gonna cut down so many trees, well, is the tree close to the house? Is it way back in the property where they have to drive back into? The further back from the street, the more expensive it gets. Is it a big tree? Is it a really dead tree? Because a dead tree is a lot harder to cut down because it's brittle, they can't climb the limbs because they might break, so they have to do something like that. Are they close to the power lines? I mean, there's, he just went on and on and on, and he said, you gotta charge by the hour, by the crew, and whatever it takes to get in and get out, and then to remove the stuff. And so, as far as trying to bid this out, I don't know really how anybody would do that. And, and he specifically, he says, you know, I've gotta make it, make this to make it work. So, um, yeah, I've been trying real hard to try to figure out, how can we get a standard price on a tree? I haven't come up with that, and nobody's been able to provide me with something.
One of the other roles that ArborX plays is it provides us with a baseline. So if our baseline is high, then it should be easy for the resident to come along and beat that high base.
Right.
But that puts the onus on them to shop and find something better. The city has done our role in presenting you with an expert that can certify that the tree needs to come down. That expert is going to give you a baseline price. You don't, you're not obligated, nor are we saying to you or forcing you to use our vendor. You can shop and find whoever you would like to and contract with that person. All we're trying to make sure of is that you're carrying a proper certification, you have the right insurance coverage, and that if you happen to damage your neighbor, you're covered for that, because the city is not going to help you in that matter.
Mr. Burns?
Well, I'll defer to Ms. Herbie, because she's been holding her hand up, and can you come back to me?
Yes.
Um, first of all, the motion on the floor is to table this or not to table this. You've opened this up into a discussion of the merits of the underlying program. And I feel that with the comments that have already been made, I should have a right to say why I'm opposed to any different thing that was, was presented at our last work session. You said that ArborX would provide the resident with some guidelines to follow. But we have no guarantee that they will follow those guidelines and choose a certified arborist who has liability insurance. I'm not concerned about that homeowner's relationship with that arborist or that tree cutter. I'm concerned about being a neighbor. If I'm a neighbor and I know that the city is reimbursing ArborX to take down a tree on my neighbor's lot, I know that they have been selected because of their knowledge, they've been selected because they have liability insurance. And if something happens to my property, I'm covered. But if we open this up to allow a neighbor to pick whomever they want, it wouldn't have to be certified, it wouldn't have to be, have liability. And now, the onus is on me, if something happens to my property, to sue my neighbor and to sue the tree company. I, as a neighbor, don't want to be placed in that position to have my neighbor going out and doing that if they are being reimbursed by the city to do part of it. That's my first problem. The second problem is, we are removing diseased trees. A certified arborist is going to know how to do that and do it properly. Again, we have no guarantee as to who may be doing this on my neighbor's property or my property, and whether they will be dealing with that according to state law to remove those diseased trees properly. The third problem is, you and I know that there are people out there who will game the system. And they'll get somebody and say, do this for me for two hundred fifty dollars. And then, give me an invoice that says a thousand, so I get five hundred. You know people are gonna be out there that are game the system, and we have no guarantee and no protection against that. I am so opposed to this. I've been on this, the environmental awareness committee for a long time, we've discussed this. And we have steered clear of this because of the concerns about liability. And when you brought this to us, the way it was structured, I said, okay, fine, I'm fine with that. But if we open this up, I am going to definitely vote against it. Because I will not put our citizens in that kind of situation where what my neighbor's doing could impact on me, and I have no protection.
Mr. Burns?
So, I've, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, Harlita, you mentioned there were criteria for your selection. And the company Arbor-
X.
ArborX floated to the top, and there was no other company that matched? Or were there others that could have been in the mix that, for some reason, wasn't selected?
We did not put out a full bid request to say, uh, anybody that's out there that's eligible. I mean, because that's pretty much what you needed to do. Um, because of the expediency to which we wanted to put the program together, through our vendors that, of who we know, ArborX is the certified arborist.
Right, and, and the way that we started the process was, I talked to Wendy Van Buren, who is the state forester, Ohio State Forester. She sent me a list, and, and we had talked about this, and I, and she says, if you do this, you, you've really gotta have someone who has certifications. You've gotta get somebody who knows what they're doing, and you gotta get somebody who's insured. This, this is a must, she says, okay? So I said, do you have a list of arborists that maybe I can look over? And she sent up, sent me a list, and I, then I sent that list to Dave Biskin to just, uh, because he's worked with these guys much more than I have, and he identified a couple, and we talked. And we, we only wanted one, because this is a pilot program. I, 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 we're gonna learn a lot about this program this year. And we came up thinking that this guy, we, has worked with the city, uh, he's done some good work. And so, we said, okay, why don't we, why don't we try him? And I contacted him to see if he was interested, and he said, it sounds like a great program. So that's how we came up. So we went through a series of state, then departmental, and then we came to a selection. There are not that many, uh, state arborists or certified arborists in this area that would want to drive, you know, any certain distance to get to Forest Park. So we had about two or three.
That were in this region.
That were in this region. And we only really wanted one, because we didn't wanna, how are we gonna divide up? It's a little bit more complicated, who's gonna get what? And what if you don't, and all of a sudden you're calling people, it's, it's, can, can be a mess.
So, so the criteria really kinda drove it, drove down the, the audience of interest.
Right.
And the, and then, the proximity drove it, made it fewer.
And we had a history of one of the vendors, and they've already dealt with us.
Okay, so this question of the, the, their rate. Okay, I need to understand a little bit more about this, because are their costs overly absorbent?
Uh, we will not know until people register and you get the list of trees to know what, I mean, he's gonna give you an estimate.
Right, but I mean, I'm listening to what was said, and it sounds like that was based on some level of fact. I don't know what that may have been, but I'm trying to get a sense of, from what we've seen or anything that we may have done, to say, yeah, that's true, this guy's, his rates are high based on, based on market or not.
From, from previous bids, uh, we found out through, that he was competitive. Okay, that was the word that was used when we talked about him and others.
Mr. Hodge just had a comment on that, Emily.
Right, I think Wright best stated it. ArborX is competitive.
Right.
Uh, it's almost impossible to say that, uh, price was made on the exact same, uh, set of circumstances, because every tree is different.
Yeah, I get that.
But their rates are competitive, that's the first thing to consider. Second thing to consider is, regardless of what their rate is, a homeowner can select someone, and it's not a guarantee that who they select is what is approved by Wright, the administrator. That's why he looks at it and determine if that price is reasonable. We're not gonna pay more than what the city could, could, uh, cost to, to remove the tree. But if they find somebody less than they could be. The last point on it is, it's with certainty, you can find somebody less, but you can't necessarily find someone with the credentials to begin with. You can't necessarily find someone that will assure you that they have the, um, insurance to cover their workers. You can't necessarily find someone that will take responsibility if the tree roots are in the sewer lines and things along that line. There are many, many factors to the extent of say, no, no one. We certainly can't say one contractor is less than another contractor unless we're dealing with the exact same tree under the exact same circumstances. But the rates are competitive first, and then, we are experienced with the contractor. So that gives us confidence of who we're sending out to the homeowner.
Right, and there's no question there. I just wanted to understand, because there were several things mentioned. And I'm still, you know, we've got this motion on the floor to postpone. And I'm trying to get a sense of, are we covering what needs to be covered to answer the question? Because is, as far as rate, they're competitive. As far as the selection, although you had, you could have gone and done a state bid and pulled state vendors based on proximity and other requirements such as, such as their, um, their, their insurance and their credential. It probably was a better way you did it, because you went to the state arborist who had a master list. You know, now, we can debate whether that list was state certified or not and all those things. But at the end of the day, proximity was probably your first driver anyway. You weren't gonna go to somebody, you know, from, you know, Dayton to, to bring them down here, because that's gonna drive your cost. So, you know, now with regard to this question of expansion versus single vendor, I think that's gotta be, if you're gonna, if you're gonna allow others, you know, if you want to put that option on the table, what are you going to do to say that vendor meets the right criteria? And, and help the resident know that you've given them a full cons, full consideration for their, their willingness to exercise their right to go to someplace else and possibly get the same subsidy. Right? Because it becomes a, a situation where, are you advocating for this vendor that you've sent to my home? Or are you giving me a full vetting based on this criteria? So, or is it just gonna say, are you just gonna say, yep, they're insured, yeah, they're certified, yeah? And the rate, you know, we agree with, or are you gonna do more than that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, listening to this, I, I think, uh, there's a pretty obvious resolution here. For Councilwoman Herbie's concern of her safety, for Councilwoman Collins' concern of the expense of ArborX, leave it open so other people can do work. Because if I don't like ArborX, I might want to hire the ABC company, because they're half the price. But, in the administration of the program, the environmental department would have to advise a citizen, if you want to participate in the Forest Park program, along with your application or what, whatever the mechanism is to get money, you also have to show us your contractor's insurance and your contractor's certification as an arborist.
And I would also probably add, your homeowner's insurance riders associated with that said work, because somewhere-
Because the homeowner's, homeowner's policy would cover the tree falling on Mrs. Councilwoman Herbie's house.
Right.
Yeah, so in the administration of the program, for a citizen to participate, they would have to show that documentation to be eligible.
And, uh, if I, if I may, and this, that process isn't foreign to Forest Park, because what I had the Buildings Department do was send to me a, uh, their list of when people want to either put in a, a swimming pool, or a fence, or a tool shed in their backyard or whatever, they have a certain process very similar to what he has suggested and what I'm suggesting, which is, uh, just have, uh, let the people find their own arborist, and then let that arborist, uh, be approved or whatever. Or the city would make sure that before they do anything-
There's a difference there. The difference is, what you were talking about is, is home improvement or property enhancement. And a person has the ability to do that without subsidy. There's only one other place where there's a subsidy that I can say that a person has, maybe two, is home and, and heating and, and cooling, where the city does provide some programs for that, and the sidewalk. So those are, those are, those areas. And in, in the one area, there is one or two vendors for the cooling and, and home, right? The other, you know, is public right of way, and they try to fix it and work with the vent, with the customer, with the, um, homeowner and the vendor. But that example is compliance to building code, not compliance to a contract management issue that we're dealing with here. In my opinion.
Okay.
And one of the things that I, I want to push back against is, you, you have to think about the staff time involved in us investigating these insurances and certifying these arborists. That was exactly what we were trying to get away from. We have done that with one vendor, that the city knows can provide that service. If, if we sent someone to do the service and, and paid for it a hundred percent, we would use ArborX. That's what we're saying. If the person wants to use someone else, then you go through the work that we went through. You contract with them, and we pay you. And that's pretty much what we were saying. So I don't have to get concerned about the fees and prices that they're charging. If it doesn't fit your palate, then you find an equivalent, and we'll pay that equivalent. But now you're asking us to be investigators on whether these people are properly insured, whether or not they're a certified arborist. I wouldn't even know how to check that out or to verify that prior to paying it.
That wasn't what I was saying.
Right.
That wasn't what I was saying.
Okay.
The burden is on the, the resident.
Yeah.
But how are we gonna know before we pass the money that they've done everything that is on that piece of paper? To make Councilwoman Herbie happy. I mean, I could pass on the paper, but I can't make them do it.
As I said, as part of the, the administration of the program, for the residents to choose their own contractor to be eligible for any reimbursement from the city, it's the resident who has to produce the documentation. City doesn't have to do anything.
But we still have to review it.
They have to produce the documentation. All you have to do is look at it and verify, there's, he is certified, and he does have insurance, and they do have homeowner's insurance.
Hey, Ray?
Maybe one final question. I, I think both points are legitimate. We actually have spent a lot of time discussing this at the staff level to begin with. We already know a resident can go out there and cut a tree down tomorrow, they don't have, need any approval from the city. The city is trying to encourage it, but we were at the point of trying to make sure that it was strictly a homeowner's decision and we would advise them of what they need as far as good credentials, the liability insurance and things along that line, but it would strictly be a homeowner's decision. This is very similar to what we do with our sidewalk improvement program where we say there's some shady people out there that'll take your money, but you can go out there and do it. Before we will reimburse you, we, we will, uh, have to inspect what you're gonna do. But other than that, it's strictly between you and the contractor. So for that reason, we resigned ourselves that, that we will advise the, the homeowner and they have a price to compare it with. And after that, it, it's on them and they would get pre-approval before they could do the work, but they would have to have some level of, of approval.
And not only that, there will be a timeline. They don't have all next year to do this. They're gonna have a, they're gonna have a maximum of thirty days. If they can't produce this in thirty days, they're, they're just out of luck, period. Mr. B, and last, last statement.
Final point on this. I mean, when you look at this program, it's not fifteen thousand dollars. It, it's roughly twenty-two-five, right? Because you, you're gonna, you got a pool of fifteen thousand of which you're gonna give upwards of fifty percent subsidy.
Fifty percent subsidy up to five hundred.
Fine, I retract that. But the point of, the real point I'm making is, or the math, the, the central piece of them, I'm looking at this and I'm saying ArborX should be looking at this as a program, not ten, fifteen, twenty individual contracts.
They are.
Then they should be able to come back once they have assessed, right? And say, here's the cost of this program, right? Which should be, should have some level of economy of scale, right? Uh, it, versus saying home number one, uh, it, and that's fine, but to me, they should be able to come back and say that because they have a bank of hours. And based on those hours, they should be able to come back and say, I can give you a rate based on hours and not all, with the consideration of all the risk factors related to each home.
But, but you have to, you have to be mindful that we're relying on the expertise of them.
Mm-hmm.
I would tell you yes to that if you could tell me what all the trees are and that they're not gonna have any difficulty in taking them out.
At that point, you should be able to do that.
Yes, there would be economies of scale, but when you're, each tree may be different. I, I, we don't know. That's why we, we said in the beginning, if we could know how people were gonna register, we could outline the cost much better.
Right, but here's the point I'm making and maybe my assumption's wrong, okay? You've got a, you've got a list of registrants. They're gonna go visit each registrant.
Right.
Okay, they're gonna assess each registrant.
Correct.
Okay? Are they gonna leave that home and give that registrant an estimate at that time? I didn't hear that. What I heard was they were gonna mark the tree.
Yes, they're giving them an estimate because they're giving us a price.
Okay, to me-
If, if they, if the homeowner, they'll do an estimate.
Okay.
And so we'll record whether they accept that or not, yes.
Okay, so that's where the flaw is.
They give us an estimate and a picture.
They're treating this as individual, individual contracts. They're not treating this as a program. Because if they were, they would come back and look at the master plan of all the registrants and then come up with a rate.
Well-
That's the difference. I think they're looking at individual-
I, I, I see what you're saying, but, but, and, and so from that, you're saying we should get, try to find some kind of a discount for the, because of the program instead of individual households? Is that what you're?
Right, but what you're saying is before they walk away from that registrant, they're actually giving them a rate.
Right.
And so you, if they're, if they're giving them a rate at that time, they're looking at each individual, not-
But that's because the commitment, it's not binding to them. Then maybe they would be able to if they knew every single person was going to sign up with them. But because now we've taken it to where, no, they're not, it is individual contracting. So you're going to lose the economies of scale.
Right.
Mr. Hodges, last word that we're moving on.
I'll be real brief because I think Hurley just hit on it. It's clearly individual contracts. It's impossible for them to know how much this total program's gonna cost because maybe everybody will participate, maybe nobody will participate.
Well, that's what, that was my point, because I asked that question initially and they said, no, look at the program and then we, we worked it down to individual. So we're fine.
Okay.
And my last point is going to be, this is, um, foreign territory for us. We'll be better educated after the pilot program is over with. There was a cap put on this because, you know, you need to run it once through to see how things are going to shake out so we can do it better the second time, so.
All right, moving on now. We will go back then to the motion to postpone and that motion has been seconded and I think we've had about all the discussion we need to have. So is there any other discussion on this motion to postpone before we call the vote? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to postpone?
Johnson?
No.
Moore?
No.
Burns?
No.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
No.
Hopes?
No.
The motion to postpone fails five-one. Now that brings us to the actual resolution. Is there any further discussion on the resolution?
Uh, just a question.
Yes.
Is this the resolution as it was presented to us last week?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-seventeen?
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-seventeen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda, item I, resolution forty dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this one by title only?
Resolution number forty dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to renew a contract for engineering services with Burgess and Niple Limited.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion?
Yes, um, these are our yearly, um, routine renewals of, uh, various, uh, engineering firms who provide, who provide consulting services to us. And this first one covers Burgess and Niple who does, um, uh, primarily works with us in our stormwater management area and also some of our detention base and design work and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion?
Just one question.
Mr. Burns?
These services, if I'm not mistaken, are not continual, but, but as needed, correct?
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on thirty-nine dash twenty-seventeen?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-seventeen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda, item I, resolution forty dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this one by title only?
Resolution number forty dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to renew a contract for engineering services with Branstadter Carroll Inc.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number forty dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution forty dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, this is the second of our, uh, these re, the, these engineering services, uh, contracts. And this is with Branstadter and Carroll who works with us on our, um, street improvement program and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on forty dash twenty-seventeen?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Forty dash twenty-seventeen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is resolution number forty-one dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement with Wood and Lamping Attorneys at Law to provide additional legal services.
Uh, motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would, uh, move adoption of resolution number forty-one dash twenty-seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution forty-one dash twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yeah, they snuck in this law one before the other engineering one. This is the law firm that we use for our labor negotiations and personnel matters and the hourly rate is increasing from a hundred and ninety dollars to two hundred dollars. And again, this is as needed and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on forty-one twenty-seventeen?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Resolution forty-one twenty-seventeen passes six-zero. Next item, item K, resolution number forty-two dash twenty-seventeen. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution to renew an engineering agreement with CT Consultants for Engineering Services to the City of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number forty-two dash two thousand seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution forty-two twenty-seventeen. Is there a discussion? Herbie?
Yeah, yes, this is the, um, last of the engineering contracts that we renew annually and this is our primary consultant for engineering services and covers a range of all kinds of things from architectural to landscaping, traffic and civil engineering and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on forty-two twenty-seventeen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution forty-two dash twenty-seventeen passes six-zero. Next item is item L, a motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following individual, individuals to their respective boards and commissions. Lois Chambers Beautification Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Linda McIntyre Beautification Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Melanie Veal Civil Service Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Dave Blythe Economic Development Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Richard Bedford Economic Development Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. George Cummings Environment Awareness Board of Directors, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Dr. Lewis Bunton Planning Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty-two. Dennis Smith Planning Commission, expiring eleven-thirty nineteen, twenty nineteen. And there was a note on this one that additional two-year term corrects a previous clerical error on that one. Uh, Alisa Evans Recreation Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Reginald Sylvester Recreation Commission, expiring eleven-thirty-twenty. Dennis T.P. Tax Review Board, expiring eleven-thirty-nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt, passed a motion appointing those individuals to their respective board and commission at the expiration dates as noted.
I have a correction.
Yes.
Uh, I think she said something, but I think that's Elias Evans Recreation Commission.
Yeah, okay. The spelling is correct. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item M, a motion, Councilwoman Collins.
I move to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request to Omni Funplex Limited, DBA Omni Funplex at one-two-one-seven-one Omniplex Court, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-forty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we direct the clerk of council to notify the Department of Liquor Control that we don't request a hearing for this liquor license for Omni Funplex on Omni Funplex, on Omniplex Drive. Is there any discussion?
Yes, the, uh, police department has looked into this matter and they don't have any objections.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six-zero. Next item is item N, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, we receive a general fund summary report as contained in the departmental report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six-zero. Is there any further business to come before the body?
Uh, yes, I have, uh, one clarification that I'm asking for. Uh, Councilwoman Herbie asked earlier if that, uh, tree removal program, if we were voting on it as it had been presented to the work session or i- if we're vote, had voted on it in some other matter. It is my understanding that the opportunity for the, um, citizens to acquire their own, uh, vendor, uh, that that wasn't a part of the work session?
It's not a part of the motion either. It wasn't a part of the resolution.
But it, but I have something, uh-
You got, you got an email from Wright explaining what he, what the process would be, which is different from what, I, I don't think that was added as an addition to the resolution, was it, Sal?
Um, I have to look at it right there, that is thirty-eight.
Exhibit A.
My, my question is, will the, uh, taxpayer have the opportunity to select their own vendor or not?
As was stated by the law director and Mr. Hodges, that's an administrative function and the email that you got indicated that that would be the process that the manager of the environmental would use.
So they will have the opportunity?
That's what, that's what he just said, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that the taxpayer will have the opportunity to select their own vendor.
That's not my, that was not what my vote was intended to mean.
Right, and that, that's why I figured there was some confusion.
That was not, we didn't vote on that.
Right.
We voted on the resolution, which is what we-
We voted on the resolution and we voted, and attached to the resolution was an exhibit, that was exhibit A. And I think if you look at the exhibit A, Mr. Hodges, go ahead.
Um, the clerk counsel might further clarify and I, I think I appreciate where the, where the issue is. The question that, uh, Councilmember Herbie raised was, is this the same resolution that was presented, the same resolution that was presented at the last meeting? And the answer, of course, was yes. That's a little different question if, whether or not this is the exact same program or attachment. The resolution is exactly the same. The recommendation obviously was a little bit different, but if it's, you know, the will of council, our intent is to allow residents to not be locked in to ArborX, but to be able to get their own, uh, contractor if they would so decide. I realize that's different than the question that Councilmember Herbie had asked.
I was under the impression that it was not a part of what we represented at the last work session.
And I, I understand that and I, I think that's where the difference is right here. But, you know, I, I think it's really just the will of-
But, you know, I, I think it's really just the will of, of council.
I, I can't support doing this program if it, if it has that kind of option.
I think we're talking about two different things. We voted on a resolution with an attachment. The resolution that we voted on did not include the email that Wright set out about the administrative part of the process. And as Ray said, if the council wishes at some point to say, we don't want to fund that program, then council has every right to do that. That's not, that's not a decision that can be made by environmental. That's a decision that has to be made by council. Mr. Burns?
I think we're missing the point here. This is a pilot.
Yes.
Pilots are intended to accomplish one of two things. Measure the effectiveness of that effort, and/or determine what to do better should you decide to continue that effort. But the first decision after any pilot is to proceed with the effort. So there will be bumps, there will be some mis, missteps. The conversation today is somewhat an example of that. But if you don't allow the pilot to go forward, you will not move forward. So I think if we just list out some of these issues and present them today, and I think the notes will reflect that. But let's not lose the goodness of what the intent is.
Mr. Hodges?
I'll be very brief, because I know time is important. Again, if it's the will of council, our, our administrative intent is to allow residents to have a choice with our preferred. But what I would direct Wright to do is take it to the board before we implement the program. The board still has time to input on this and, and give further direction. It is, it's so much of an administrative matter. But I think we could take input from the board that can discuss this for the rest of the, you know, their meeting evening, just knowing we got the basic concept of the program, and we got some very specific recommendations. And I think from there, the board can give us more specific direction.
That's the job. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Just so, to summarize what we just got through talking about, the resolution that we voted on was a resolution that passed. It had nothing to do with how it's going to be administered. As Ray said, Wright, he's gonna be directing Wright to have that discussion with the Environmental Board of Directors. If they have that, that discussion, they will make a recommendation to us. And at that point, we will or will not direct or suggest or whatever, however the motion is put, or the manager who's going to administer the program, how he's, what's gonna be done.
Clear.
I think.
Again, just, just one last detail to try to be clear. I was recommending that it goes back to the board. They'll give staff recommendation. It doesn't need to come back to staff, I mean, to council. Council's already made a decision, as I interpreted. And the decision I'm trying to communicate is, I understand it that we're gonna give the residents choice. But before we implement the program, we'll send it back to the, to the Environmental Board, and they will give us advice administratively. And I'm basically saying, if the Environmental Board doesn't want us to have choice, we won't do choice. But at this point, we're recommending we have choice. I think council's given us authority to have choice, and we're just gonna get additional input after discussion from the Environmental Board.
But are we allowing the Environmental Board to be the final arbiter of whether or not the taxpayer has a choice of vendors?
This is not about, the taxpayer, if they register, they're gonna register under whatever guidelines are there.
Well, let, let me, I think to, to your question, the taxpayer has all the authority that they need today. The question is not, do they have the authority? The question is, can they take advantage of the program when they make their own choice? Because they can go and pull, do, get a vendor today. They don't need the city. And they can cut it down themselves, and, and they can take all that risk. But it, it comes, and that, I mean, that answers your question, in my opinion. But the greater issue is how you, how do you deal with the risk administration? Should you open this up or keep it closed, right? It's the risk management aspect of this that I think everybody's kind of spun on.
And cost management.
The cost management, the, 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 the resident has ultimate choice. Should they say, your costs are too absorbent, they can go someplace else.
Correct, and then have the someplace else subs, be subsidized.
The subsidy is not the issue. If they choose to go, if they choose to go someplace else and they're happy with that price and the service of that vendor, they can pay for it. If, if that vendor does not meet the criteria of the program, they don't get a subsidy.
So that, that was, that was my whole issue. Do they have the opportunity to go someplace else, have some, somewhat a different vendor meet the criteria, and then have the city reimburse?
Every, yes, yes, they have that.
Okay, then we're finished.
We're finished, we said that 30 minutes ago.
No, but that, that, that's it. That, that's all I needed to be clear on.
But understand, the criteria is the criteria, and it's not unique per vendor.
Yeah, and it ain't gonna change.
It's not gonna change.
Right, and that's, 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 that works to the taxpayer's benefit.
Not necessarily.
That the, that the criteria is gonna be the same criteria.
Oh, God. Anything else for the good of the order?
Move for German.
We're adjourned.